The future, when there's issues, we could come back here again because I think it's very nice to be on a site wherever it may be for us all. I just want to let you know for the record, Michael, I was fortunate to be a native son of Los Angeles and when this was open in 1961 on a Saturday, my father took all his sons and they toured the building when it first opened. So it's, I've been here before, but it's nice to, you never know where you end up in life. I could never tell you I'd be sitting here in a committee, running the committee. So, we have a representative from the Legislative Analyst Office, so if you could call the first item.
Yes, sir. Under item one, the Board of Airport Commissioners submits for council approval a blanket order for successor non-exclusive revocable fuel delivery permits at Van Nuys Airport. Each is for a term of five years, beginning May 1st, 2014, and ending on April 30th, 2019.
Just a quick report.
This just allow us to issue permits for fuel delivery at Van Nuys for all the FBOs.
Very good.
Locating CIO's office, we review this and recommend approval.
Very good. Okay, Mr. Bonin, so ordered. Welcome. And just on Van Nuys, I was out in Van Nuys the other day and I went under Sherman Way, and I didn't make the call, but I know what happened. There's a turnout for safety underneath it, but there was a lot of trash and debris in the turnouts. I know it's, could be a public works issue, but I know Department of Airports is concerned all the time. If you could tell Jess, is Jess the man runs it there? Just the turnout's both on the north and south side, and there was a little graffiti on the tile. So I meant to call Monday, but what is today, Tuesday? So I'm not that bad. Okay. Next item.
Under item two, the Board of Airport Commissioners submits for council approval, the executive directors' report on LAX plan compliance, including a recommendation for approval of a negative declaration relating to the Atlantic Aviation LAX hangar and office development project, which is proposed for construction on Atlantic Aviation's lease hold of 15.3 acres located at 6411 West Imperial Highway at LAX. The board also submits for approval the First Amendment to Atlantic Aviation's 30-year lease for the development and operation of a general aviation fixed base operation. The amendment would revise the address of the lease hold from 6401 to 6411 West Imperial Highway. It would update the lease with certain standard requirements for the new hangar and would authorize LAWA to amend or terminate the lease if it needs the lease hold for airport operations. Also, the amendment would add provisions for compliance with the city's equal benefits ordinance and city's limitations on campaign contributions to elected city officials.
Very good. Want to start with the CIO?
Yes, we've reviewed this and recommend approval. It includes a number of issues, including an increase in the rental rate to make it consistent with the charges in other locations. It's pretty routine. We recommend approval.
Good.
It allows them to build this 40,000 square foot building and it clarified some things in the lease that was helpful to us.
Great. Mr. Bonin.
Move approval.
Okay, move approval. So number two is done. And number three and four, I'd like to put together, is that all right? We could, let's call three and four together.
Yes, under item three, motion Bonin Labange proposes that Los Angeles World Airports be asked to report to the council on the effectiveness of inter-agency coordination and communication during and leading up to the killing on November 1st, 2013 of Transportation Security Administration Officer Geraldo I. Hernandez and the shooting and wounding of additional TSA personnel and one passenger in Terminal 3 at LAX. Also, the motion would ask LAWA to report on current emergency preparedness and response plans now in place at LAX, also the immediate lessons learned from the November 1st incident, and report on a, or provide a detailed progress report on LAWA's implementations of recommendations made by the mayor's Blue Ribbon Panel on Airport Security in its report of June 20th, 2011. Under item four, motion Bonin Labange proposes that the council ask LAWA to report to council on the timely dissemination of appropriate information to the traveling public, coordination with emergency response entities, and clarity with regard to obligations for passenger safety, health, and welfare, including emergency preparedness plans in the case of natural disasters. Further, that the council ask LAWA to examine the feasibility of several items, an airport-wide communication system, assigning LAWA personnel to strategic locations, traffic control coordination, and clearly defined obligations for passenger welfare between LAWA, the airlines, and outside emergency response teams.
Thank you very much. I think the first thing I want to do is all of us, think for a moment every day, Mr. Hernandez is not with us, other victims of crime, wherever it is, and just take a moment to reflect at the tragedy that took place that day, the loss of life. Thank you very much. And every time that I'm here, I think of Tommy Scott and his family, a Los Angeles airport officer, gave his life in service, and we hold our thoughts high for Los Angeles police officers in the valley, recently in a collision, a motor officer, as well as the victim of the shooting last night, a police officer, West Traffic Division, as well as Officer Lee recently in Hollywood. With that being said, I'm going to ask my colleague, Mr. Bonin, to open up, and then I would ask the general manager and director of the airport to, and the team to come their presentation. Mr. Bonin.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. First of all, I'd like to thank you for holding this special meeting and holding it here at LAX. I also want to thank you for opening the meeting with a moment of reflection for the ultimate sacrifice that was made by Agent Hernandez. Also like to pause and remember the sacrifices that were made by James Spear and Tony Grigsby, who were injured while they were helping passengers get out of the way that day. I was here on November 1st, along with the mayor and along with probably most of the folks in this room, and I think it is important, right off the bat, first note to make is one of pride and gratitude to the incredible response that we saw from our first responders that day. It was truly remarkable to see people working so well together so quickly. It was remarkable and life-saving that they were able to apprehend the shooter so quickly. What was a disaster, or what was a tragedy could have been an epic disaster had things not worked out as well as they could have been. I was also incredibly impressed with how quickly the airport returned to normal after such a disaster, is that we were able to get to full operational function within short order, and that's a testament to the professionalism and the quality of the airport staff. And I think it's worth noting, this was one of the first tests of Mayor Garcetti after taking office, a few short months into office, and I was particularly impressed with his steely calm that day, as well as the calm and professional demeanor of Gina Marie Lindsay. I think we have a lot to be grateful for. There was a lot that went well that day. Our first responders, as I said, got the shooter down quickly, and we were able to return the airport, as I said, to normal. But we also got lucky that day. We got lucky in that this was an isolated shooter who was targeting only TSA employees and was not shooting randomly for the general population, because in the time it took to apprehend him, had he been shooting for a broader population, we would have had significant and serious problems. We're also very lucky that when there were some problems with the communications, an air serve employee knew the right number to call to reach LAWA PD, and that was particularly crucial that day. There have been a lot of hearings and a lot of discussions about what happened on November 1st and what could have been done better and what went well. I'm particularly glad to see the leadership that BoAC has done with LAWA staff and so many in preparing an after-action report. There've been various hearings from different agencies looking at particularly the emergency response that day, the first responder response that day, and there's been talk about this issue and that issue. That won't be the focus of my line of inquiry today. I want to focus today really on communications, on coordination, particularly with civilian partners and with crowd management that day, the evacuation and the repopulation efforts. Despite everything that went very well that day, onsite that day, it became very clear that there were problems in the way we were communicating, there were problems in the way we were coordinating, and there were problems in the way we were managing the crowds. There were people who were milling about without direction, who were wandering the roadways with luggage. There were people sitting on planes, on tarmacs with no information. There were employees at the airport who had little information and were not empowered to help in the situation. The Red Cross couldn't get in. Many of the first responders who were stationed further outside the immediate perimeter didn't know what to tell people, and even some of us, myself included, were directing people who were milling about to go to the nearby hotels, even though the hotels did not know we were sending them there, and even though we had a lot of outsiders who didn't know how to get to the hotels. We also ran out of water quickly that day, and there was a shortage of wheelchairs. On November 1st, all of that stuff was an inconvenience, minor to some and major to others. But had the circumstances been different, had there been more than one shooter, had the shooter been acting with other explosive devices, had the shooter been trying to target more than TSA agents, that inconvenience for some could have been an absolute catastrophe for others. We can do much better at the way we communicate and the way we handle situations like this. I say this not to point fingers, not to do anything in terms of blame or recrimination, but so that we can figure out how to do better the next time, because I think we can all be certain that whether we like it or not, there will be a next time. There will be a breach of security at some point at this airport, there will be a terrorist attempt at this airport at some point, or there may be a natural disaster at this airport that will cause us to need to activate evacuation and communication procedures. So that'll be sort of the area that I'm interested in talking about today and pursuing, and I look forward to the presentation and the dialogue. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. And as you mentioned, the natural disaster, or the man-made disaster, all that, earthquakes. It's funny, I was at City College this morning at 8:00, I got a parking place right in front. I said, "What happened to City College?", you know, spring break. But anyway, I went in there, and in the office was a personnel board, and they had a flip chart of all the severe winds, power outage, all what to do and all these certain events, earthquake obviously, or crime, violent crime like that, and it is a tragedy, but I think we could learn, lessons learned, so I could ask Gina Marie to come forward and her team to make a presentation, and I thank you. And I also want to thank all the officers from the Department of Airports who were here, especially in helping in this. Thank you.
Chairman Labange, Councilman Bonin, welcome to your house. We're delighted to see you out here. We actually are grateful for the committee's focus on not only this event, but how to use this event in the most positive way to develop what I think we all are understanding needs to be a greater edge of resiliency for any public operation as we go forward in an increasingly uncertain world. This event of November 1st was anything but a normal day for LAX, thank goodness. We hope we never get to the point where that is anything close to a normal day at LAX. It was obviously a tragic day for TSA Officer Geraldo Hernandez and the other three people that were injured. We are focused on exactly what you articulated, Councilman Bonin, which is how do we use the lessons learned from that 30 hours of disruption? Actually, I would say fright and disruption. We had thousands of passengers, of course, that were very frightened. Thank you for mentioning the really great work that was done. There was a lot of great work done. It is not where we have spent our major focus over the last five months. A word or two about the after-action report, and then mainly, I think what we'd like to do is follow your line of questioning because of the reality that you referenced, which is there's been a lot of discussion about this. I think probably the last thing anybody needs is another PowerPoint presentation, so we really want to go where you, where you want to go. But a little bit about the structure of the after-action report. The mayor and the board did ask us to do an after-action report, which is what we would have done anyway, because anything like this is, it places a huge responsibility on our collective shoulders to be sure that we find the lessons, learn them, and take the implementation actions that are necessary to implement the lessons learned. So, we, the public safety agencies, we're leaning in together to do an anatomy and a critique of the public safety first responder response. Simultaneously, our operations folks, our emergency management folks pulled together with a third party outside, an expert in emergency management and incident management, that we pulled in not to do the report for us, but to be essentially a kind of a no-nonsense mirror for us. Whenever you're looking at your own actions and you're saying, "Are you really being honest and as critical as you can be?", we want to be sure there's somebody there stressing us on that, and we also learned a great deal from these folks. So that's the kind of collective outline of how we approached this, involved a bunch of stakeholders, I think over 100 stakeholders, in several different facilitated discussions and debriefs, so that we tried to get everybody's perspective that we could. The result is a very robust report that I think you all have seen, a set of general findings, some of which are positive, some of which are identifying areas where we need to tighten up and build competencies. So it's within that kind of general context that we would like to respond to any questions that you have. Jackie Yafft is our Deputy Executive Director for Operations and Emergency Management. Pat Gannon is our Chief of Airport Police, also interim Deputy Executive Director for Public Safety, and behind us there as a stalwart backup is our Director of Emergency Management. So with that, I think we'd just like to go where you would.
I just want the Director of Emergency Management up here too.
Come on in here, John.
Got it. Thank you. Mr. Bonin, I have some questions, but I want you to lead off.
Oh, sure. It's good to see you all dressed up. Last time I saw you, you were a lot less formal. He actually got me through the perimeter here on November 1st. Thank you very much. Good to see you. I want to do a couple framing questions, if I might. We have something called an Airport Emergency Plan, right?
Yes.
What is that?
Want to answer that? Sure.
Under the FAA 139, which governs and certifies an airport like LAX, we are required to have an Airport Emergency Plan that talks about the hazard risk assessment for what hazards would basically hit the airport, how do we get prepared, what response plans, what mitigation efforts we have. So it's a comprehensive plan that covers what, how we're going to prepare to handle any incident that would hit the airport. There's also annexes or chapters, I should say, to it that would be defined of exactly how the agencies and their roles and responsibility during a specific incident. That would be defined in these chapters in more detail.
I'm going to jump in a little bit here, if you don't mind. Looking broadly, given the many years I have under my belt, at the aviation industry, we started out as airports focusing solely on aircraft accidents. That was what was happening. Then it migrated to hijackings, then it migrated to the issues of protecting the cockpit, and now we are moving progressively, we're moving from the airfield progressively to the more public areas of the airport. So the Airport Emergency Plan as required by FAA is very, is very airfield-centric. And part of what we are all learning through the decades of evolution that we've lived is that those emergency plans, not through a requirement basis, but through a reality and preparedness basis, need to become much more robust. So over the last 18 months, is it 18 months? We have been engaged in developing 19 different response plans that are very specific to incidents that have nothing to do with an aircraft accident. We have been engaged with, is it 15 different agencies throughout Los Angeles in order to craft those plans, so that each one of those response plans engages the broader community in how we respond to them. And those are actually up for final adoption by the executive committee that is managing this process next week, on the 17th.
Seventeenth.
That's very gratifying to hear. I think that that's very important to note. In all my years of dealing with the airport, I think I gradually came to an understanding that this isn't just a place where planes take off and land, that this is functionally a city unto itself, and we need to have an emergency operations plan just like any other city, like the city of Los Angeles does, like Santa Monica does, like any other city. What is the difference between the Airport Emergency Plan and the Emergency Operation Plan?
There are differences. The Airport Emergency Operation Plan was actually our former response plans that were adopted about six, six to seven years ago.
Okay.
And the Airport Emergency Plan with the chapters of those exact 19 annexes that Gina Marie's talking about is the updated plan.
Okay. Now, in the Blue Ribbon Commission Report a few years ago, it talked about how the Emergency Plan and the Emergency Operation Plan were in conflict. Is that what has been being worked out over the past 18 months?
Correct, because again, that plan was about six years old. The new Airport Emergency Plan with all these chapters would replace the old one in more detail and updated.
And the, what we had on paper on November 1 in those plans, that included protocols for evacuation and repopulation and communications?
We, it was going through an updating period of the evacuation plans, and we've had one for a while, it was just being going, going through the updating process.
So, on November 1st, before an update was completed, there was an evacuation, communication, repopulation plan?
I think we need to be very specific about that, and correct me if I'm wrong here, Jackie. We had an evacu-, a terminal evacuation plan for airside evacuation.
Yes.
And on November 1st, that plan was followed. It actually worked. It was chaotic, lots of people fleeing out of the building, they're scared to death, you bet. It's always going to be chaotic. That plan was followed. We did not have, you guys keep me honest here, we did not have a plan for evacuation onto the roadside and the, is that accurate?
Beyond the CTA.
Beyond the CTA.
That was my, that was where I was going. I was going to ask, given that we had a plan on paper, if it was followed or if it was inadequate. So to the, it sounds like you're saying it was followed, but...
The one we had was followed. We did not have the landside one, and that is now being developed.
Okay. All right. According to, that talks about the evacuation plan, but not so much the communication component of that. So I'm wondering what we thought should have been the case, or what should be the case going forward about, how do we get information to someone who is sitting on an airplane on the tarmac that day?
Talk about how that happened.
Communication between us and the aircraft is actually between Air Force Operations and the airfield, the FAA tower, and the pilot of that aircraft. We also coordinate with the airline operations office in, to, because they are in communication with the pilots also. So on the day of such November 1st, there was communication going on between the operations from LAWA, FAA tower, and the pilots, as far as deplaning the aircraft, parking, moving, movement of aircrafts, or gate availability. The choice of day of November 1st, we had a lot of aircrafts come into the airport. A lot, three terminals out of the nine were not available to accept flights. Terminal 1, 2, and 3 were evacuated, so a lot of the flights that were associated with those three terminals were held on the ground for a while. We did our best to try to deplane some of those flights on buses into other terminals. Some of those flights held on the ground longer. Again, that's a decision that was based from the airline and the pilot together. We do not force aircraft to deplane.
And so if a passenger was confused about what was going on, you're saying that information was transmitted to the airlines, and it was either the airlines failed to communicate or...
Or the little information that we had about what the situation, but the information falls from Air Force Operations to the airlines and then to the pilot of the aircraft.
Since communication, I think, was a thematic challenge for us, it, it's worth noting that part of what we learned in the whole build-out of Incident Command and build-out of our Department Operations Center is that we need to have a better handle on how long it's going to take us to do certain things. In other words, when we decide that we need to clear all of the parking garages and all of the terminals before we would be able to try to stand up the operation again, then we need to be able to have a good sense of how long that's going to take, which we did not. And that allows us then, assuming we fix the communication mechanisms, to actually substantively have something of value to communicate to those airlines, to the passengers on the aircraft, to the folks that are waiting outside on the sidewalk. And so we kind of had two challenges on that day. One, we had less than adequate communication mechanisms, and we had less than adequate or definitive substance to communicate.
Yes, I can attest to that, having been there with many of you. And the Blue Ribbon Commission panel had sort of called this out as one of the things that we needed to work on, saying that our terminal and evacuation repopulation plan had significant deficiencies, exit markings are deficient, additional facilities beyond parking lots are needed for evacuations, and et cetera. Shelter-in-place plan doesn't explain how travelers and tenants will be notified and directed to shelter in place. One of the things that seemed particularly glaring that day is, not only was there not the evacuation plan for the landside, which I understand we're now working on, but when all those people were congregated there, there wasn't a particularly clear means of communicating with them, as you said. There were times when some of us in the city were communicating stuff that probably wasn't the best information, and I think in a situation like that, folks are inclined to look to someone in uniform for information, anybody with a badge for information, anybody with any airline information for information, and we weren't able to provide that. So what, what means are we working on now to create both? I think there's two types of communication we need to work on. One is mass communication, and then one is more targeted information for those who are not the first responders, but the second responders, the airline folks, the service employees, the airport employees, the Red Cross folks.
Yep. So why don't you talk about the things that are already in place now, post-November 1, relative to communication, and then, and the art?
Okay. So we're looking at communication with different layers, so we're able to actually overlap the resources and the tools that we have. So first thing we have that we already implemented in place is the wireless alert system. We're using the cell phone towers within the airport surroundings to be able to hit every cell phone that either by an employee or a passenger and put a message out and the status quickly. So cell phone tower, that's already in place that we can use today with, in cooperation with the city of Los Angeles, already have the system.
And you're saying this will be sort of like the, the sort of Amber Alert sort of woken people up? Anybody who is in the airport area will get...
We'll get that quick initial message of an alert of what's going on at the airport and whatever, the quick instruction that we want to give in a short, quick message, and then we can always do updates after. The second is actually doing the same exact thing, but also the hard lines within the airport community and also at the airport. So every operations office of any airline or stakeholder or a tenant that has a hard line or phone in their office, that phone will also ring and give them a message too, and then the surrounding communities and businesses will also get to know. The third one, which we had before November 1st and were organizing the layout, is the EverBridge, which is an emergency notification system also, and that will be organized with mandatory, pushing the message out as an email, text, or phone until the person that actually received it. or phone until the person that actually received it notifies that they received the message and acknowledge it. So, those are four PA systems in the terminals. We're also looking at consolidating, being able to do that from the Airport Response Coordination Center, and being able to put a message out as quickly as possible in all the terminals, where today we do it manually to each terminal separately. We will have the capability of upgrading the system and be able to do that from the Response Coordination Center right away. These are all communication tools that we have in place today that we're using in one capacity or the other. The other one, we're doing face-to-face communication to address exactly the person with the badge and giving that comfort and customer assistance. We created what we call an airport response team, or ART. And there are Lawa employees. We have about seven, one hundred and seventy-five already trained and ready to deploy out to different locations, either inside the terminals, on the CTA, on the airfield, or even outside on the parking lots, and be able to avoid, give us a quick assessment of what the situation is, what are the needs for the customers, if it's special needs or supplies, and then also communicate with the passengers face-to-face of the status. So, from the command post, we will know what we wanna tell the passengers, and we would be able to pass that information face-to-face. They'll have a special vest on, and they'll be very easy to recognize between the customers.
So, there's something I wanna underscore, 'cause I think that this was very surprising to me. It makes sense when I, when I think about it, but it was very surprising to me to learn that there is no universal public address system at the airport.
There is a public address system in the terminals. They're not consolidated from one central location to be able to push one message to all the terminals. So, if I wanna do a message today from any of the terminals, I can actually go to it and pick up the phone and make them do the message.
But if we're in the, the incident command post that day, and Chief Gannon or someone says, "We need to send this message to the entire airport shelter-in-place," there's no one place to be able to do that universally?
Not, not as a PA. We can put it on the EverBridge, and we can do it on WEA today, but not as a PA system. And that's the one we're working on upgrading.
And what will it take to do that?
It actually, it's, it's in progress already as far as the assessment and the technology. The order, the project is already in, on track. So, I was just talking to the IT deputy yesterday, and we are looking into, already grabbing the terminals that have that digital capability.
Mm-hmm.
And then, they're upgrading the other systems to actually bring on the other terminals to the ARC.
We're also sort of changing the way we do some advertising at the airport. There's gonna be a lot of digital advertising in the central terminal area. Will that be able to be used in order to message to passengers in the case of a major incident or the need for evacuation, to give them instructions on what to do?
We are part of the IT also upgraded the terminals, installing TV monitors in the TSA screening checkpoints in the baggage area, that we are able to push a message out from the ARC again of what it is we wanna say to the customers during an evacuation or passengers. And it also satisfies the ADA requirement of having special needs, be able to have a visual messaging out. So, that project is already also on track.
So, we could actually override the, the advertising for Coca-Cola or something like that?
Those monitors actually will be specifically to put messages out to passengers, not, not the ones of advertisement. Because of the way each of the terminal, for example, on the FIDS monitor, the one that displayed the departures and flight information. We, because these terminals are separated, they're not connected from one terminal, each airline actually manages those display. We don't have the ability to override that. However, what we wanna do in phase of, part of the PA system upgrade and the visual paging is actually add a separate monitor on the side of those flight monitors to be able to override it from the ARC to put that message separately. Because the customers still wanna see the status of the flights, and then they can see the message on the side of it.
Yeah. I just could've sworn that those billboard companies, one of the ways they tried to pitch this was the ability to communicate in emergencies. But we'll look into that and check the records on that.
If you have anybody dig out what that promise was, we'd be delighted to be aware.
We will definitely look into that. So, I just wanted, I, I wanna talk about the difference in communication between the public, which you said could be done by sort of the, the sort of Amber Alert text system. I like that a lot. I think that captures a lot of the airport population, at least in the short term. Eventually, people's cellphones died if we've been there for a prolonged period of time. But the EverBridge system is, is the system that you talk about that would communicate with precisely whom? That would be the folks you'd want giving directions to people, right? Who is on the EverBridge system?
Today, we have about seventeen, eighteen hundred registered folks on it. And basically, it's all the stakeholders, tenants, or hotels, ground transportation companies that we deal, are at the LAX that are registered at. And what we ask these companies is, they have a person that's authorized as the communication liaison between us and these companies, registered plus one or two or five, or how many they wanna enroll within our companies, that can receive that message twenty-four-seven. So, all our airline station managers or our concession folks, hotel folks are actually on their ground transportation. And they receive the messages, and they're all pre-scripted messages already.
So, who, under that scenario, at a hotel gets a message, there's been an incident, and we may be diverting folks in accordance with our evacuation plan to your hotel?
For example, Laura Hughes is on there, and she received the messages from the hotel group. We also have an email specifically for the hotel, that group that is between our communication, public relation folks and them, that they pushed the message out right away to them also. So, as of November first, too, we want, we met with Laura Hughes and the hotel folks to understand how we can bring them in as part of the DOC activation and needing resources or assistance to passengers.
I think we wanna be clear, unless I'm wrong on this, we're not saying that happened on November.
Yes, and that I get. But, but we're, we're building out a system where someone onsite at the hotel will get a notification?
Yes. What happened is they are actually on the system before November first, but November first, the message did not go out for about an hour. The message was actually sent out to only a smaller, much smaller law enforcement, public safety group. So, the general population that I talked about did not get it for an hour. But they were actually, a lot of the hotel and a lot of the ground transportation companies are already on the EverBridge enrolled.
Who at the Starbucks in one of our terminals gets the message on EverBridge?
It'd be their operations manager. I can come up through the list and actually share it, but I don't have.
Is the operations manager someone who, is, is it someone onsite, or is it someone who?
Well, I think we should be clear that they're the ones who designate. The concessionaires or the hotels or the whomever company that enrolls, they're the ones who designate who they want to get the message.
They, shouldn't, can we change that? I mean?
With the intent of achieving?
The, the place I'm, I'm trying to push us towards is sort of, the term that I've heard used in security circles is whole of community. When I was in Israel in December and talked to security experts there, they all talked about having a whole of security approach. So, that an incident at Ben Gurion, not just the Ben Gurion employees, but the airline employees, the service workers, the folks who work in the concessions, all are mobilized as sort of soldiers and helpers in the incident. And I know the BRC report talked about when the whole community means when a disaster or catastrophe strikes, everyone in the community has a role. Everyone must take responsibility for some part of the response and recovery, and our plan should reflect everyone's role in an emergency. So, if we just say, "All right, the guy at Starbucks, you designate someone," then I don't know that we've, we've plugged that hole. Is there a way we can make sure that we've plugged that hole with the baggage crews, with the concessions, with the hotels? I mean, in a situation like this, you know, information makes people stronger, and people wanna be, they wanna be soldiers. They don't wanna be bystanders or victims.
Yeah. One of, one of the other things we're looking at doing, or not looking, we're actually implementing is to cover the whole community approach that you just mentioned, which is also was mentioned in the after-action report, is creating a terminal floor warden program of some sort, where that person is in each terminal, there is a group of people from all those tenants that are basically considered that terminal their house or base of operation every day, to be familiar with the layout of the terminal, the peak hours, the companies that work in that terminal, and actually start working with notifications with them, doing a drill and exercise of evacuation, how it works, and being involved in making sure that terminal is ready for whatever situation it hits. So, that terminal warden program would work with the emergency management group of creating notification list of exactly per shift, each of the shift who would get notified, who is the floor warden for the shift of the morning or the afternoon. So, again, when something happens, they can become part of the solution, not part of the problem.
Are there particular airports or public facilities that we look to as a, as a model for a good whole of community approach?
The port, LA port is part of the ones we've been working with on the whole community approach. Other, other airports, personally, I have Denver or JFK working with through how we can use the airlines and the concession and that program to put it together. The consultant also is gonna help us figure out how to put that. Right now, we have ability to notify every person in each terminal through the WEA system. Again, it hits the passenger and the employees, so the employees anywhere with a cellphone in their pocket, they'll get notified. But we're also working with SCIU as far as the union and the labor of how we can use their employees, what kinda education and classes they can attend first, as far as emergency response and basic. We're putting a computer-based training on evacuation and the basic of notifying the airport police, and then what, what is a general notification and what it looks like for LAX, what would be a basic understanding of evacuation on the airfield or in the landside, and how they can be part of it. And that will become mandatory for all the badged employees for the airport. So, that would be our first step to, again, basic knowledge and education to all the Lawa employees and LAX employees. And then, step two would be go into each terminal specific and start working with the tenants of that terminal.
When do we think that'll start to happen?
The computer-based training, which should be in the next sixty to ninety days.
Because you're probably familiar, SCIU has, has said that since Bradley International Terminal has opened, a lot of them still haven't been trained, sort of given an orientation of the evacuation procedures or rally points there. They said there was some emergency training, but in the new facility, it's a lot more confusing about how to get from one place to another. We don't know which doors lead where, or which ones our badges can open, and that they're eager for new evacuation plan and, and training.
For the TIBIT opening, there was actually a large task force of familiarization training for TIBIT, and a lot of companies attended that training. A lot of companies took the tours before the terminal actually opened. But we're continuous effort to try to make sure that everybody acknowledges the terminal. The computer-based training that we're looking at putting is actually return the terminals in a three-D module that become the initial knowledge of the terminal and the layout of it. Our emergency exists in each terminal, either it's airfield, they're all push, you don't need a badge to actually open it to evacuate, it's a push bar. You do need a badge, it's a daily business, but if for evacuation's sake, you push through the door and to the tarmac. In an evacuation, that's self-evacuation incident, passengers and employees will push the fastest way out to become safe, either that's airfield or landside. And that's what happened in Terminal Three.
On, on November first?
Before we move off of that, I wanna be sure we give you a current answer to your question. You wanna talk about the training you've been doing over the last several weeks?
Yes, Councilman, we also started just recently, two weeks ago.
For the record, restate your names.
Oh, thank you. John Kinnon, the Director of Emergency Management for Lawa. So, two weeks ago, we started based on the feedback that we were receiving from tenants and stakeholders, that they really had a insatiable thirst to understand, how do they evacuate? What do they do during an active shooter? What do they do during an earthquake? That training started last week. We had, by the end of this week, thirteen classes will have taken place, and another thirteen are scheduled the next two weeks. But we're bringing them into an orientation of evacuations of respective terminal buildings, going over the evacuation plans in this very room. We're also covering active shooter. We're also covering through the fire department, the CERT, the CERT, citizens' emergency response teams, as well as the fire department, what to do in the event of an earthquake. If people have a desire to go above and beyond that, we're also offering online training for the incident command system via the FEMA, the Department of Homeland Security. If they have a thirst beyond that, we're gonna be setting up, and it started last week as well, tours of the incident command post, the Department Operations Center, as well as the ARC. So, they're getting right into the middle, the core of our tools that we use to resolve emergencies. They wanna go above and beyond that, we have additional classes added through the Los Angeles Fire Department for the CERT program. If they wanna go beyond that, we're also bringing in the American Red Cross for family preparedness so that they can respond, 'cause their family, they know is okay.
Lastly, I just wanna point out that while there was a lot of training for the TIBIT access and egress when the facility opened, part of the reason that computer-based training is so important is that with staffing turnover, inevitable staffing turnover, really the only way for us to be sure that, that the companies involved are staying on top of that is to integrate it to the badging process.
Right. I was gonna ask about how often it, it happens. John, where do you look for best practices for this sort of whole of community approach?
You know, we look, we look at a variety of locations. We've had some conversations with casinos who just handle the masses of people, situational awareness that they have to have in various aspects of their, not only their property, but what's happening. Talking to sporting events, people have my particular positions at either sports arenas or stadiums in terms of big crowds, how do you get them in, how do you get them out, and how do you maintain common operating picture and situational awareness? Talking to other airports, but we, we are probably in some, we probably have more experience than most airports, unfortunately, other than people who really get a lot of hurricanes and a lot of blizzards. So, we're going above and beyond just the airport perspective to see if we can glean best practices.
One of the problems we had that day was folks who, we did a good job keeping people out, many of whom we needed to keep out.
We did a pretty good job keeping some people in, too.
Yes, very much so. But we also had real challenges that day in getting people in who needed to get in, whether it was Red Cross folks or folks trying to deliver more water. Why was that, and how do we fix that?
Part of the, what occurred that particular day is that we required a lot of help. And as units came in from all over the city and began to be dispatched to certain areas, especially on the perimeter, we're not all that familiar with the, with the operation that occurs at the airport, nor were they as familiar with the airport itself. And so, they weren't able to give as much direction as they possibly could. Part of that, there was no centralized location for employees or others who really needed to get into the airport, a single access point with an individual that could listen to the individual and to be able to vet who does, who needs to get in here and who does not. That has since been fixed, and depending on the incident, we will have a designated roadway into the, into the airport to, to solve that problem. The other issue is orientation to the airport. So, for all of our partner agencies that surround here that would come in to help us, we're putting together a, just a couple of hour orientation of the airport. If you come into the airport and I say T3 to you, you would know that that would be Terminal Three, but many people would not. We've also been told the address to the airport is, is One World Way. Well, that's the address of this building, not necessarily other buildings within this, within this complex. We've already gone through and renumbered and, and put addresses on all of our terminals at a, at a height and a size that emergency responders could see when they came in, that would allow them easier recognition of where they are and what they're looking, what they're looking for. So, we're, we're working through those particular problems. Our ability from the command post to be able to push information out to that, that wider perimeter and those people standing on there, and to be able to facilitate questions and answers that need to be accomplished. The interesting thing for us was that we probably pushed out into the streets about seven or eight hundred people is, is what the estimate is. About three thousand or so people were out onto the airfield and were bussed and housed throughout the airport. But those seven or eight hundred were quickly joined by really several thousand more people that even though we were having this traumatic incident at the airport, decided that they still wanted to catch their flight. And, and so, they showed up in droves that compounded the, the problem for us. And our ability to push information out to them also was, was limited. And part of that is the, we were asking people to contact their airlines, and the airlines didn't have the information that they needed to, to be able to put that information out too. So, that, we all have to do a better job at that.
It's, it's worth noting, one of the things that sort of freaked, freaked me out that day was seeing people out on the tarmac, but, but I think it's important to note, that that is the proper airside evacuation procedure.
That's right.
Having people on the landside milling about, sitting on their suitcases, I presume, is not going to be the proper landside evacuation procedure.
We're not, we're not gonna encourage that. And, and I will just, for the sake of kind of rhetorical contemplation, raise one of the issues that... And I will just for the sake of kind of rhetorical contemplation, raise one of the issues that we don't have a clear answer to, and I think every incident is going to be unique, but part of what is the DNA of an airport operator is that you're always open. You do your darndest to be sure you never close the airport. Hindsight's always twenty twenty, but it is arguable to say that those folks who were sitting on their suitcases waiting for their flights to leave, or that were coming to the airport hoping to pick up whomever was arriving, would have had a clearer sense if we had just of what was going to happen, if we had just said, you know what, there's nothing going to operate out of here for the next ten hours. Now, the ripple effects of that are fairly significant economically and to a whole bunch of people's travel plans. And would that be better? We don't know, but it is a question that I think we will actively raise on a regular basis whenever there is an operational disruption going forward. And it's, I don't have a clear answer as to what's better, frankly, but it's something we should contemplate.
Were there any concerns, are there any public safety concerns, not crowd management concerns, but public safety concerns, that having people milling about or sitting on their suitcases or their luggage on the roadways puts them as a target if there had been more than one shooter?
Oh, absolutely. Or if it had been delayed, because it took a while before, as those crowds began to develop and to increase. And one of the reasons, one of our strategies here at the airport is to not put ourselves in a position where we have traffic that has stalled and we're trying to keep things moving, and that it would be the same, because it's an attractive target to a terrorist. One of the difficult aspects of it is even if we had had designated holding areas, it's trying to push people or encourage people, I guess is a better word, into those particular areas, which would be open, there'd be parking lots, there would be other, we've designated some areas already. But encouraging them to go to those areas when they think that if I stand here, I'll be the first one to get on my Southwest flight, is going to be a tough discussion with some people. Others will leave if they have more information, others will make alternate plans.
One of the other problems we faced that day is that, and I think maybe this speaks to the fact that we're still changing our understanding of emergency response to prepare as if the airport were a city and not just an airport, but there seemed to be a, we ran out of water very quickly. Are we preparing better for provisions and supplies in case of a big incident or in the future?
Yes. And on November first, we actually ended up distributing about ten thousand bottles of water, just in the first few hours.
Sixteen thousand.
Sixteen thousand, sorry. Some of it were actually, we have at the airport that we keep as a supply, and some of it came from the Red Cross, and then we also had some that from the concession that were in the terminals. We already have the point of distribution, or pods, which is strategically located containers with supplies for the first responders and passengers located within the CTA that would be available right away, within the first few hours or minutes of the incident to be able to give to the passenger, including water.
We have them now, but we didn't have them on the first...
We did not have the containers strategically placed.
Part of the change we've made since November first.
So instead of housing everything in one warehouse and trying to get trucks and load it up and put it, we already have, we would have these pods all over the CTA in the parking garages and by the terminals. And then that gives us also the time to be able to buy the extra supplies within either the Red Cross or coordination with the CDUC, or using the concession or the catering companies that we have at the airport as a resource while we actually get more. So again, depending on how long the incident is, we, this plan that we have, that we developed right away now and we put in place, is, gives us the ability to distribute supplies right away to different locations in the CTA without having waiting for trucks and delivery.
And how long would those supplies last presumably before we would need the trucks to do additional delivery?
In a given time, we have about a thousand to two thousand passengers in one terminal. That should supply one terminal within the first few minutes right away. And then we have the ability to bring some supplies from the airfield that we have, a warehouse, to again, replace the supplies and then order some more. So it gives us the ability to have that continuous access to resources and supplies right away.
Assuming we have that perimeter closed.
Yeah. I mean, not to be too grim about it, but as I'm thinking about this, you want to be prepared for, I mean, not quite the post-apocalyptic scenario, but if there's an earthquake that functionally shuts down the airfield for a few days, or, you know, a cyber attack that shuts down the electric grid for a few days, and you've got sort of a superdome situation, and you've really got to be caring for people for a few days.
Right. And we would work with the CDUC at the time to be actually be able to transport the passengers to a better, comfortable place, and with our ICS structure that have a logistics to be able to buy these supplies and have, including the food, restrooms, baby diapers and baby supplies and medications, we would actually transfer into a bigger shelter location than using the airport facility.
Just one or two last questions. I thank Mr. Labange for his patience and his time. One of the things that's called out in the after-action report is, there's a couple different incident command posts, is the first responder incident command post, I guess it's the ICP, right? I get the acronym right? And then there's the DOC, which is sort of the civilian and operations end. My understanding of the after-action report is it called for beefing up the DOC, but also for better...
Beefing up both of them, actually.
Yes. And for better communication between the two.
Yes, better planning and communication. I'm going to use my, you know, civilian speak, and then these guys that are schooled in this much better than I am can be more precise. But here's, here's how I saw it and also see it more clearly looking back on it. We had an incident command post that was built out partially, but not totally. So some of the more elaborate capabilities and assignments that you would normally build out in an incident command post of a, an incident that is going to be hours and hours long, didn't get fully built out because the incident escalated so quickly that frankly, folks got overwhelmed and started trying to essentially plug, you know, behind sprinkler and put their finger in the dyke. So the incident command post was built out fairly robustly, but not completely. So for example, there wasn't a really robust planning section in the incident command post. And the same, and probably to a more extreme level, was true of the Department Operations Center. And that was partially because there, it was a Friday at LAX, and it was also that the incident, again, on the operations center escalated so quickly that the needs kind of swamped the boat. And so we have to be ready to populate the Department Operations Center with a set of experienced and trained people to do specific tasks, and we have to be disciplined about restricting them to those tasks. So I know that you are assigned to, I don't know, name something, you're assigned to the Ops desk. Over here on the planning desk, they really need help, but that, you're a good guy and you want to go help them, but no, you have to stay on the Ops desk. And there were, I mean, one of the great things that we saw was everybody tried to fill the needs that they saw. And that is a tremendous tribute to the human spirit wanting to fix things. We have to be, however, in order to most effectively and efficiently manage the full breadth of an incident like this, we've got to be clear on the assignments, and we have to be disciplined about imposing those assignments. That is what, that was a big learning, I think, for all of us, and we really need to do that. Now, you guys tell the truth.
It takes a lot of coordination and a lot of training together between the civilian side and the public safety side to be able to staff the incident command post structure and the DOC together. Both structures need both sides. But it's the training that we want to harp on. The DOC, this was actually the first event that we activated the DOC to a level three. And we did a tremendous job with the staff we had on hand, and Gina Marie said, everybody just got pulled into their, from their office and filled a seat, trained or not, and said, try to do the best you can. So that day taught us that we need to actually unify command between the public safety and the civilian works for both the ICP and the DOC.
And how is that going to work? Because the ICP, the first responders are going to set up their post where they're going to set up their post, and hopefully we'll get a mobile command post for them. But the DOC is going to be in a separate location.
It should be.
And should be, and I understand that, but how will the two communicate? There will be first responders there who may give a direction that unbeknownst to them will have a profound implication for operations, or perhaps how the Red Cross gets in and out or something like that. How are those things going to be translated?
The way that it would work normally in any incident throughout the city, so each city department is required to have a double operation center that feeds information to the city EOC. Same thing as the Department Operations Center would have constant communications with the EOC. The incident command post should have constant briefings with the Department Operations Center. So that's exchange of information is not done individually, but rather through a series of updates and conversations. Now, the operations people in my incident command post should be talking to the operations people in the DOC, but as collectively as every half hour, depending on the incident, there should be a constant briefing where at that time, objectives are reestablished or specific issues are addressed and the needs are addressed. So in most cases throughout the city, if I talk police and fire, the Department Operations Center for each of LAPD and for LA City Fire really allows the incident commander to run their incident while the DOC supports the rest of the city operations and feeds supplies or whatever information or things that are needed in order to complete the mission there. We, what, because this is such an, the concept of a DOC which didn't even exist a few years ago here is still a new concept, understanding that relationship and getting that battle rhythm together does take some time, and we haven't had the ability to work through that over time. This gives us a huge opportunity to fix some of the holes that we found in November the first.
The after-action report calls for some sort of joint trainings and drills.
And that has happened here.
That's happening already?
That's happened already, that has happened here in the past. For this airport to have sent most of their emergency managers and most of Jackie's operations people have been back to Texas to TEACs, the National Incident, really the National Learning Center for Incident Command, that most of us in public safety have already gone two years ago. The forward-thinking of operations here under Jackie's leadership was to send all of her people back there. So even in my estimation and coming in here, to have a civilian staff that already understands the components of incident command and how to run it was remarkable. Now, it's just how do we practice better to get better at it? Because you really won't find a civilian staff, I think, as familiar with incident command as they are here.
So if incident command is outside Terminal Three and DOC is where?
Over on the west side off Pershing.
Over on the west side off Pershing, where is the person who's in charge of communications? Whether it's press or the Everbridge system?
That'll all, yeah, it'll be all different people, and it'll depend on what the incident commander, what the objectives are, and what are trying to be pulled out, pushed out. So as part of the executive staff of the incident command system is a PIO and a media. So you're pushing your unified message out through that PIO and sending that message over through the ARC into the Department Operations Center or into a joint information center. Ideally, you would have all of your agencies that are involved and their PIOs would all come together in what's referred to as a joint information center or a JIC that would occur. There's terms for everything.
Thank you very much. And just a little more, I just want to say it's been very good, especially on the coordination and the work, and training is so important. Training is the key. You know, you look at the people who were in the Super Bowl, they start in August, they have two-day practices, they go all the way, you know, six months, every day training for that one game. Concentrating is so important as we go on, and as generations of employees come and go, you got to keep training because there's an incident that some people have lived through, but they haven't lived through this one. So I just wanted to make that statement there. On the issue, I just wanted a couple of comments there. Do we still have an AM frequency on the radio? Dial sixteen ten for airport information, or is that no longer? That's gone. That is gone. So that's, now, could that be, how gone, how far gone is it? Because it is...
I don't think we have the frequency, I don't think we have the license anymore.
Got it. But would we want that to say if in an emergency, and with, I don't know, with technology, just write it down and look, you know, a hand phone or whatever, check in with this app or whatever it is, and use it, just see if that's available? Because I know that was constantly when Michael Bonner was talking about communication, that's a system that's there right now, and maybe that is something, just to look at if it's still resurrection, that's a real important issue there. Also on the, and I'm jumping around because I took notes, is Mr. Bonner questioned and had ideas here. Community-based training is so important in the CERT program. I know in some aspects there, we reach outside our community, I know it's a big facility, the training of employees there. Do you do background checks on people who work in the Starbucks and all the places?
Yes, anybody, anybody who's...
Got it. Oh, so that's okay, that's very good. But training is real important for everybody all the time, and I know there's, as you mentioned, turnovers. Addresses is so important, it's real simple, whether we're in the heart of the city or here, to know the address, because that's what the fire department works on, on the address, and then they go. I think that's real important. The one thing I do want to say, Gina, my fear, and I've been around a long time and have lived through periods of time, when I first started traveling young, there was the Red Brigade, which worked real well and did bad things in Europe, and how they did it, the Irish and the problems that they had with the English, and then cameras seemed to calm that tragedy action down. But the baggage area to me seems like the most accessible place if I was a bad guy, because I remember in working with the police department years ago on the Madrid bombings of the subway, it was said that they were very focused on gates, not on, in a video that they did receive from those who did bad things, they saw a video of the gates at Orlando Amusements or at Orange County Amusements or wherever the case may be, Los Angeles Amusements, they saw the gates, they didn't see the rides, they didn't look at the rides, they said, the gates, you get to the gates, doesn't matter what happens if you're a bad guy at the baggage or at the entryway, too. What are we doing in the baggage area? That's what I want to know now. Is there any difference than the November incident, which is so tragic?
I'm going to let the expert answer this, but before he does, I'm going to tee up the dilemma, which is that you have correctly put your finger on the reality that wherever you define the boundary between the secure portion of the airport and the public portion of the airport, you've got more vulnerability on one side of that than you do the other side of that. You can debate where you should put the boundary, and that's a legitimate discussion. But the reality is we are, we still allow free access to the public side of our airport, and that creates quite a challenge for these.
And also a missed opportunity, because I know you always used to take someone to the airport, you'd be with them holding hands all the way, now we just leave them right at the gate coming in, but it's not an experience that we once had culturally. I mean, it's totally changed.
We look at it from the standpoint, we have moved that perimeter progressively from the airfield out to the roadways.
One of the issues that came out as a result of November the first was the idea of fixed posting individuals at the screening station to protect the screening station. And one of the things that I've argued is that, just as you mentioned, Councilman, is that there are a lot of areas in the airport that need security and need to have people working a variety of different ways. And we layer our security here so that we're not just as, I used the term last week, if we're predictable, we're vulnerable. And I don't want to be predictable, but our, so I want to make sure that all three levels of this airport and in each terminal that we're covering it appropriately. levels of this airport and in each terminal that we're covering it appropriately. Yeah, so that particular area, do I consider it, I consider it as vulnerable as any other area and it's on our radar screen and it's something that we address each and every day, whether it's by uniform police officers, whether plainclothes police officers that, that we use here. And we supplement that depending on, with security officers and with a good, robust relationship that we're trying to even further enhance with our employees in those particular areas, because they have to be our eyes and ears also.
I also think it's a compliment, the traffic officers are almost aggressive as those in front of Union Station. Now if you know Union Station, they have the, you can't stop it right in front of Union Station, so you got to move, move, move. But it's a very important element to control and those officers are very key, traffic officers, but I think that's, that's a eyes and ears. And also you cannot, you know, the white zones for loading and unloading, passengers only, no parking. I mean, that's constant reminder and it's just a key. I wanted to bring that up as they go forward. The other thing I wanted to say too, because things changes in an emergency, people respond from all over the city, maybe LAX PD could develop a video. So, because training is not just for you, but for everybody. And every firefighter from every station would see what, if you go to LAX, this is usually what you want to have done. Now everything goes out the window when there's an emergency, but at least you have an idea. In the most active emergency that I ever was involved in was the Griffith Park Fire of seven years ago. And thankfully, a engine company from Wilmington saved the old merry-go-round and an engine company from Watts saved the historic nursery, you know, totally not local firefighters, but they knew how to, they drill in Griffith Park. They all, you know, get aware of brush season and what to do. Because many of those responders will be from outside the close proximity to your area, such as the Station Five over here and Nineties and etc., Nineties in the valley, but Ninety-Five's right here. So I just wanted to mention that, maybe you could look at that.
We've already had, one of the lessons learned from the local battalion of LAFD is they do a really nice job of orienting all of their firefighters to the airport who potentially could respond here in an emergency. And we're doing that with our law enforcement partners also.
Got it. And if you look back in the files and see what happened in ninety-four and in seventy-one as far as when the earthquake came, what did the, because I think that's a big issue. An earthquake is going to be a real big thing. And I, so if you look at whatever they did in ninety-four and seventy-one, I know we're much more sophisticated, but you talked to Dr. Lucy Jones, who's now like a deputy mayor for the mayor, is supposed to really be aggressive. We could look at that because you realize from Northridge certainly, which is twenty-eight years, so twenty-five years ago, because someone at three, four, or five years old may not remember, there's a several million people in this basin who've never experienced a big, big, bad earthquake. So just that issue, Pat, I wanted to mention. And on, are you, do you tell people in an emergency on evacuation to leave your bags? Like if you're trying to get out of the airport, you want your property, but what is the standard for that?
On a self evacuation, they leave everything behind like they did on November first, but on a, on a controlled evacuation, we let them take their, their...
Got it. Because I know, like the fire department says, leave your belongings or whatever the case may be.
Again, depending on the situation.
We had folks who left without their shoes because they were going through the...
Right. Right. I did want to ask another question too, because I have been on airplanes and you do get, I think Air New Zealand has the most, I don't know, like a peppy safety message there. Do we want to create a safety message nationally for American airports that probably maybe has, just to remind, because if you're sitting in a terminal, if there's an emergency, this is what we want you to do in a fun, uplifting, not a scary way, but a fun, I don't know if, when you go to your professional conferences, if you look at that, I think that would be very important. On the nine-one-one issue, is that you've looked at and you're upgrading, whatever you need to do on that?
Yeah, the, the nine-one-one system, if there's a nine-one-one call here from the, from the airport, it will go to LAPD's communication. If there is one, it could go a variety of different places depending where you are in the airport property. If you're, if you're near the one oh five freeway, it could go to the CHP. If you're near the southern end of the airport, it could go to the South Bay nine-one-one dispatch center. We'd like to make airport police a nine-one-one center for this locate, for this location and work in conjunction with LAPD's Communication Division and the fire, and the fire department. It's what we would like to do. That's going to take a little bit of work. In the meantime, what we've tried to do as far as the workarounds go, we've started an initiative here to ensure that every employee here at the airport understands what number to, what number to call to get airport police on that particular day on November first. We're very fortunate, as Councilman Bonner indicated, that the, that our, an air serve employee that was here had the number for airport police preprogrammed into his cell phone. He, he just pushed a speed dial button and he had our operator on the, on the phone very, very quickly. That was the key in getting the officers mobilized in here as quickly as they possibly, as they possibly could.
Got it. So you're working actively on that to try to correct that issue there? And as far as the county sheriffs, how much, how far is the county, who could be to you faster, the county sheriffs in this South Bay, unincorporated LA County area or...
We rely on, we rely on LAPD because they can bring the most people as quick, as quickly as possible. However, we had a huge response from the city of Hawthorne, El Segundo and our partners to the, to the south. LA County Sheriff's did bring an entire mobile field force, which is really about fifty personnel to the problem, as did the California Highway Patrol was, was huge. We used all of those assets and all of those resources here that day.
Was the command center west of Sepulveda and is, are you going to define in the future a staging area outside? Like at a fire, they stage out and then they send you in, they don't all go to where the fire is?
We, we used a staging area, the Almison Recruit Training Center in Westchester.
You used it that day?
We used it that particular day. That, that was the third wave of, of personnel that came in. What came in originally on a, as a response to a, an officer needs help call that was, that was put out, was in the hyperdynamic phase of the, of the incident, is really a, a very massive response of, of police officers. You're not in that hyperdynamic phase when you still don't know whether we have multiple active shooters, what, what's going on in the, on the, on the airport. It isn't, it doesn't work well to say, go to this one location and we'll bring you in. You need the resources now and you manage them as they get in.
I got it.
But as, as, but as, as the incident begins to take shape and form and you can staff a staging area appropriately, because you have to have the resources to be able to accept the, the resources and then give them missions to, to go out, that takes a little bit of, of organization and, and a little bit of, of time.
And is LAPD at an incident, who's responsible when there's an active shooter?
It's a unified, it's a unified command. We're all, we're all responsible.
Equal on that? And how about, is there a SWAT team at the airport?
There is a, we have a tactical team that is here at the airport. We don't have a, a SWAT team per se, but we do have a tactical team that works in conjunction with LAPD SWAT.
Right, when they get there.
If needed.
Yeah. And then drills, I just wanted to mention in the PA system is Mr. Bonner is so key. I'm trying to look at all that is. And also on the command center, where physically is that, at the new police facility? Where's the command center where everybody gets in?
The operations center?
Yes.
Is over on the person.
Of a person in the rear of the airport, which is very good there. Also on, on, in the city's earthquake plan, it's the public parks and public schools that are evacuation first typed here. And the Red Cross does an amazing job too, as far as that you wouldn't think of it, but absolutely that's, when there's a fire and it displaces people, it's the Red Cross, they're not the city of Los Angeles, not the housing authority or housing department, it's the Red Cross. I think toning that up a little and what Mr. Bonner spoke earlier about the hotels and being able to be partners, I think is real, real, real key. On that area, schools like Loyola or Big Fields, you know, are also places to be involved with that. And just wanted to mention drills, drills, drills is so important as we go through this future, because as Mr. Bonner did open up, there's going to be a challenge and it's, and you wake up and, and then you got to deal with it. And so the preparation is so key for all of us there and working with that. So I just want to say this is very important and I think we should continue this report. I don't know if at this time, we need, we could show this in committee, because I think there's a more administrative work you're doing and at some point bring it to council.
Yeah, I've got a couple of report back recommendations.
Got it. So that we could do that at the appropriate time, whatever it's, thirty days, sixty days or whatever, when you have something really to report. And I think it's important to look at maps and I'm looking at the chief there, so people don't necessarily understand. And in some airports in other parts of the world, everything's public and they don't integrate commerce, you know, as far as the fields. We have a, not only integrated commerce in the terminals, but right next to you within the runways, et cetera, how it goes. So I think it's good to map this out and when you make your presentation in the future to show everybody exactly how you have to deal with this in a way, because you still have a living street with Sepulveda closed immediately? Sepulveda?
Traffic was huge. Sepulveda was open, but it was logged.
It wasn't moving.
It wasn't moving. And the LA DOT, uh...
Partner, they played an important role.
Important role. And I think that's real important to note and say, how do we do this? You know, what's a better way? Do we, do we shift people over to aviation? Do we, whatever the case may be. And I think it's the amazing phenomenon of these challenges and times that we live in is there's multiple things, there's not just the person who's shooting, is what did he, how did he get there? Does he have a car in the structure? Was there something there left that could hurt somebody in, in, in a way? So there's a whole bunch of thought process that we don't know. And also I think in, informing the public too, because they think the, the train's going to keep moving. Stop it, close it. How do you do it in the event of an emergency? We're going to make sure everybody's safe presently on that. So I think this has been very fruitful. Mr. Bonner?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Labanche. And, and thank you for the line of questioning. I, I'm so grateful for this discussion today. I think it was a good one. I want to make sure that, that it continues and that the things we've discussed don't fall off the radar screen. Sometimes that's so easy to happen in, in the public arena where there's new things coming every day and this airport faces challenges of great magnitude every day. So, you know, I, I personally want to continue to remain focused on this with a particular emphasis on, just as at Metro, I like to always focus on the passenger experience. Here I really want to focus on the civilian and how we communicate with the civilian, how we create that whole of community so that all of our civilian partners and workers here, from, from the airlines to the airline employees, to the nearby hotels are all included in what we do. And, and to, to make sure that that's always paramount. So I'm going to ask for, my recommendations would be that, one, Lawa reports back to TCT with a spreadsheet report on the recommendations of the Blue Ribbon Commission, listing each of the commission's recommendations, the status of its implementation, and an indication of whether or not that recommendation was also called out in the November one after-action report. Chief Cannon tells me that report's essentially done, so I was going to request a thirty day on that. The other stuff, I was going to request a ninety day report back to give some time for implementation and stuff. And that would be a report back on what the status is of the update of the evacuation and repopulation plan that you talked about so much progress on, specifically indicating, because I know you can't tell us what the details of the evacuations are, but what criteria Lawa's using to determine the need for mass care? What stakeholders are being considered to be part of a whole of community for the purposes of response, evacuation, care and communication? And what new methods will be used for mass communications? And specifically some things I'd be looking at in that is progress on the training of airport employees, including service workers on emergency response. The status of the creation and implementation of an airport-wide PA system. Plans for the progress of the joint civilian and first responder training and exercises as was called out in Observation Eight in the after-action report and the purchase of that mobile command post. And I have that all in writing so that if, you don't have to...
And also I think if we could add to that too, what happens to all the planes that are coming to Los Angeles? You know, how, what does that affect? You said you always want to try to obviously keep it open, always keep the water flowing, but just a little on that so we have an understanding on that issue, which would be real important for all of us to have. And the other compliment I wanted to make, when Mr. Bradley's terminal was open, the volunteers that you had here from the airport alumni or the constituency was most impressive. When you mentioned CERT, I just mentioned there, there's after, at some point, I don't know what it is, whether it is, if these, that they could be help in any which way with all these people. I was just very impressed with the volunteers that are here when I've been here on those things and maybe they're a, a, a walking CERT team, not to go in to a building to do something, to be outside to relieve officers and others, people that you can count on and know that maybe would report to, you know, Ninety-Eighth and, and Aviation. That's, you know, this is five hours into the incident, but they can use them to relieve frontline first responders in some way. Because it was very impressive how I, every thirty feet, there was someone to direct you, to encourage you, et cetera. So that was just an idea I put on there. I want to thank all of you again, Mr. Bonner. I want to thank you. I do have one public comment called Mr. Gutierrez, Mark Gutierrez, if you want to come and if you could vacate your seats, thank you very much.
There's a podium up there.
Oh, good. We got a podium. Oh, good. Thank you very much.
Mark Gutierrez, CIU, USWW. We are, what the union is hoping that comes out of these discussions with Lawa as, as Ms. Jackie Aft alluded to, that we are, we're in discussions. We're hoping that we're moving towards a comprehensive training that the workers that are members represent, about two thousand members at the airport can do while on work time. That's kind of been, that's kind of what we, where we want to move towards and the, the union in this case can be a resource. There are plans in New York and, and other places that, that we're looking at. So we're excited about working with Lawa staff and we'd love to actually brief city staff on it as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. So no other cards, Mr. Clerk?
No, Mr. Chair.
Okay, Mr. Bonner, thank you and I thank everybody. Have a continued good day to serve the city well.
So I was, I moved those recommendations, moved.
Oh, sure.
Cool. Just for clarification, would that be a continue, are we continuing this in, in committee?
Yes, but a thirty day report back.
And the ninety day on the other.
And a ninety day report back. And we're flexible on the few days with some of the calendars, but we'd like to really stick this up. And I want to thank the airport staff for opening up their conference room.
You're always welcome here.
Thank you very much. This meeting's adjourned.